The agenda tonight, we're going to not have the Finance Committee or Public Works Committee reports tonight, meetings, and so we'll start with personnel, but before we do, I want Mrs. Hughes, instructor at Ranger College, she teaches Texas government, I want her to know that Sarah Plake is here tonight, so for attendance records, she's here. It's official now, it's been recorded for now on, you've got evidence now.
There you go.
All right, I'm going to first of all turn it over to Brandon for Public Personnel Committee.
All right, we've got a couple of personnel items to consider from the Fire Department, so I'm going to turn it over to Chief Isbell.
Thank you Mayor, Council, Screen Hauling Committee Members. Tonight, we're requesting approval to bring on part-time firefighters. These would be staff that would backfill for our regular firefighters when they're off. We run a very lean staffing model, and when we have any vacancies, it puts a pretty good strain on the system, and we've just gone through a vacancy for the past few months, four down, actually five personnel down, we did that last year as well, and when we do that, we end up backfilling with the same personnel over and over, and they end up working an inordinate amount of overtime, and it's just a strain on the system. Bringing part-timers on just to backfill the positions that exist only when they're out would just ease that burden of long hours, seeing today they work a 48-96 schedule, one overtime shift puts them 72 hours, sometimes even 96 hours straight at the fire station, so an over-timer, a part-timer coming in, just picking up 24-hour shifts would help relieve that burden. We would be governed by some regulations within the Affordable Care Act on how many hours they'd be able to work, and through the Commission as well, and how we worked them, so we would monitor that very closely, and again, these would, this personnel would not work alongside existing personnel, they would work in place of personnel that would be off. We would, we're proposing to fund this through the overtime line, because that's today, that's what's funding those positions as it exists. There will be slight savings to the budget, because our proposed pay rate for those positions are a little less than the overtime rate for our basic firefighter. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How many are you looking to bring on?
Well, we want to kind of slow roll it, we're thinking six to 10, but that means I've got to, I have gear and uniforms for those folks as well, so we're going to try to ease into it and kind of see how the need is, how long our needs last, and how well it fits within our system. The beauty of it is, is that it's not, it doesn't have to be a permanent solution, it could be temporary, or it could come in waves, it could be variable, we might use it for so many months of the year, specifically if we were downing staffing, or if the holiday season, we had a lot of folks off and we had staff down, those would be times that we would look to use it, so I'm thinking somewhere in that six to 10 range, and we kind of want to ease into it.
So would this be like from the county, or from other departments in the area that would just come in, or how would...
Correct, we have, there's a lot of firefighters that live in the area that work in the Metroplex, and we've kind of put some feelers out to see who might be interested, and we've got a lot of interest, so I believe we can be very selective in bringing some folks in that's got experience and that should be able to help us very quickly in filling those gaps.
So Chief, sometimes when this is done, and you're cutting overtime for existing employees, there's some backlash. Sometimes employees want that overtime, they depend on that overtime.
Correct.
So how do you, how do you play that into it?
We've polled our membership, and we've got a base of firefighters that work the bulk of the overtime, the ones that are available, ones that are living local, and that are not tied to secondary jobs or outside jobs, that come in and pick up most of that overtime, and they're working a lot, and it would, I believe, ease a burden, and we didn't get any negative comments back. We do plan on still offering overtime to our frontline employees, but we don't want to use mandatory overtime to make sure that we're hitting our minimums, and so in lieu of mandatory, we would be able to backfill with the part-time.
And any costs associated with equipment and training?
So, they would already be trained, we've got a cache of some gear, we'd have a very minimal cost on uniform, and then the intake, the hiring, so we'd have to put them through a background check and a drug screen, that sort of thing, that would be the only cost that we see associated at this time.
And that would probably be offset somewhat by the lower rates, the regular time rates. Any other discussion on this matter?
Just, in reviewing the process, I mean, how frequent are you going to do that? I mean, are we going to look at it quarterly? How do you plan to manage that part of it?
We're going to be looking at it every week, yeah, it's going to, we're, this is something that's new to us, I don't care who's done it before across the state, we've looked and polled, but it's something new to us, and it's something we don't want to shake the model that we've got in place and mess up what we've got going with our staffing model, we just want to shore it up. We run a very lean and efficient staffing model, I'm proud of that, I mean, we really do, and this just takes just a little edge off of that burden of running that lean.
Chief, it sounds like you do have people in mind.
Yes, sir, and some of the folks that have left to go seek employment elsewhere, left on very good standings, that we've trained, still have their uniforms, we, some of those have expressed an interest in coming back and picking up part-time shifts.
Any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and then put it to a vote then.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that we forward to the council with a positive recommendation approval of the use of part-time firefighters.
Second.
Moving second, we send to the council a positive approval of using part-time firefighters. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes, we will send to the full council positive recommendation use of part-time firefighters. And our second personnel issue.
Well, tonight, we're also coming back to seek reauthorization of a position of Battalion Chief. A little over a year ago, I believe it was in June of last year, we went through a reorganization of the command staff of the Fire Department, and as a part of that, we agreed to attrition away the two Battalion Chiefs that we had in existence. One of those has attritioned out, we've got a second one that scheduled attrition out in January. We also have our Community Resource Paramedic Program that's being run from the line, we would like to move that into a, an EMS Chief, a Battalion Chief position, to be over that program, he's over the Community Resource Paramedics, and take on the whole EMS system as it sits today. This person works with Dr. Brister, the President of the hospital, is making meetings with all the advocacy groups within the city, and operating at a very high level within the department. This would be absorbed in our current budget, there wouldn't be any extra added costs, it'll be just a little less than our current expenditure on a Battalion Chief. However, after January, we would still have one Battalion Chief within the department, and again, last year, we had, we had made a commitment that we were going to attrition Battalion Chiefs out. I would say that we didn't have any idea how robust and successful our Community Resource Paramedic Program, the CARES Program, was going to be, and today, it's very successful, very robust, and I believe this position is needed to manage that program and with EMS system within the department.
All right, any discussion or questions for the Chief?
Was this budgeted, or is this something that we're going to...
It's, well, so it's in our budget today. There's no extra cost today or going forward.
So, we would end up still with just the one Battalion Chief position?
Yes, sir.
After January, I suppose.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions for the Chief on this matter?
Do you anticipate, Chief, moving the scope of oversight beyond, ever, is that ever going to go beyond the EMS?
So, all of our EMS, I don't see it going beyond that. This position would report under the Division Chief of Operations, so it would, it's going to report under the Operations Division where it fits, and it's going to take care of all the EMS training, the credentialing, the Community Resource Paramedic Program, the outreach piece, as well as the work he's doing with the advocacy group and seeking out grants. Now, I believe we posted a job description in the packet as well, so there's a job description in there that would kind of outline our expectations of the position.
And like I said, we've got, the person for this is...
Yes, sir, and he's, he comes to us very highly trained and educated, he's got a, so I'll look back on here, I believe he's got his master's degree, he's in a nursing program, he's very passionate about medicine, medical care, EMS, and specifically, community paramedicine. This mobile integrated healthcare has been something he's been passionate about for many years, so he fits perfectly into the program, just happens to be a firefighter for Stevieville Fire Department.
I think we've met him, he does a really good job.
Yes, sir.
Very, very good.
That's not a question, but a statement, I'm doing a ride along with him, spending the day with him, seeing everything that he does, was eye-opening, and it was, yeah, he does an amazing job.
He does.
He operates at a very high level.
All right, any other questions or discussion? And I have a motion from committee members.
I'll make a motion that we approve, or send the council the approval of the creation of the EMS Battalion Chief.
All right. Moving second, we consider authorizing, or send a positive recommendation to council authorizing position EMS Battalion Chief. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? And it carries, we will send to full council positive recommendation, authorizing position of EMS Battalion Chief.
Thank you.
And that's it for Personnel Committee.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nomination's Committee.
All righty, so we have quite a few on the nominations committee agenda for tonight, just because at the end of the year, we have to reappoint people who have termed out or replaced the people who do not wish to rerun again. I believe Sarah sent over the spreadsheets and the packets of the people who were terming out and wished to rerun or not to re-serve. And the first one I'd like to discuss was going to be the Airport Board. Both applicants are currently on the board, and they are just reapplying to continue to serve on this board. So I would like to make a motion to recommend to full council the reappointment of Austin Brown in Place Four and Hardy Hampton in Place Six to the Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes to send to council for a positive recommendation for the Airport Advisory Board. The next one is going to be the Building Board. I believe this one is just reappointing Fred Parker from Place Two, so I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Fred Parker in Place Two of the Building Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. So we'll move that one to full council with recommendations. The next is the Electrical Board, and this is going to be the reappointment of Kenneth Howe in Place Two. So I'd like to make a motion that we recommend Kenneth Howe in Place Two of the Electrical Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. The next one, we have someone who chose not to re-serve on the board, but we do have applicants to fill those two seats. So my recommendation on the Library Board is, I guess my motion is to recommend to the Library, or, I'm so sorry, I make a motion that we recommend to full council the appointment of George Moreno to Place Two to fill the vacated seat by Darla Fint, and then Joe Garcia to Place Seven of the Library Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. The next one is going to be the Main Street Advisory Board. We do have someone who is coming off of the Advisory Board, and we had a few applicants to consider, and after we looked over it, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to full council the appointment of Scott Allen to Place Two of the Main Street Advisory Board, vacated by Terry, is it Colley, Cooley?
Colley.
Colley. Sorry, so I guess I've made a motion that we recommend Scott Allen to fill the vacant Place Two, vacated by Terry Colley.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Perfect.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Back real quick on the Library Board.
Okay.
Place Four and Place Six, need, do they need to be reappointed?
Reappointed.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Try to read through all these quickly. So back to the Library Board, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Place Four, Kathy Eckenberg, and Place Six, Kathy Horat Smith, to the Library Board.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
The Main Street, Place Four, Place Six need to be reappointed as well.
You're correct. So I'd also like to make the motion for the Main Street Advisory Board to reappoint Place Four Kelly Salt and Place Six Rita Cook.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. On the Mechanical Board, I'd like to make the motion that we recommend to full council the reappointment of Rick Aldifer to Place Four on the Mechanical Board.
Second.
Perfect. All right, what, oh, sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'd like to draw my application to make sure you like the board, so you have an opportunity to choose someone else for that position.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, you're good, and are you Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
We can discuss that.
Just go back to it.
Or you can do it now.
Do that place.
So we discussed our other option, I guess, I guess we need to, I guess I'm going to make the motion that we remove Kelly Salt from Place Four on the Main Street Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then I guess we will fill Place Four with Philip Greer, so I'd like to make a motion that we replace Place Four Kelly Salt with Philip Greer to the Main Street Advisory Board.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So are they, are they in the order that we should rank them up? I mean, how...
They're just in the order they were received, so.
They're in the order they received, so he was, he came, you know, he came in first, is what you're saying.
Yes.
That's my question.
I suspect Jill Burke would make a good committee member.
I agree.
Well, we can discuss it, I'm more than happy to discuss it.
Right, Bob, and then I'll back you, I'll look back on you. She's, I've worked with her a long time. She's the Dean of the College of Education for a part of all, and so I work with her in that capacity, and I know she takes, she takes a big interest in what goes on in Stevieville.
She is the president for Keep Stevieville Beautiful, correct?
I don't know. She is.
I don't know if she's the president, she's very involved.
She's very involved with Keep Stevieville Beautiful?
She's, she's very task-oriented, she, when she takes something on, she accomplishes her task, I really like, Jill's been a mover and shaker, a total for many years, before she retired.
I was just thinking, Phil, because he has a business here, that was the only reason why I was thinking that he would be the best fit, so, yeah, if y'all are happy with Jill, I'm happy with Jill, too.
So you've made a nominee?
Yeah, we need to make it, I need to...
Do we have a second on that?
We did not.
You did not have a second, no? So I die of lack of seconded.
Yes.
Okay.
So we would like to recommend Jill Burke to Place Four of the Main Street Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Perfect, so Jill Burke will now be in Place Four. All righty, so for Tourism and Visitor Bureau, we have a few open spots, we pushed that, this is a fifth, sorry. We currently have Kaylee Camino, who owns camps, that I would like to recommend to move to Place Four, that's currently vacant, and then Milo Choak, move him to Place Two that is currently vacant.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, so we'll move that forward to council, and then the other items on the other boards that we are going to leave open and discuss in December, we don't have any actions to take on those currently, so, and that ends my committee meeting.
Sir, thank you, ma'am. Leanne, Tourism and Visitors Bureau Committee.
Actually, Rita Cook is here tonight to, she would like to pass along some information to the council for something for us to start to evaluate and maybe adopt.
Sure, state your name and your address.
My name is Rita Cook, 316 Tanglewood Circle. I want to thank you for allowing me to come tonight and speak to you. Last time I talked to you was at Open Comments, and I kind of talked then about some of the things that have happened, so I'm not going to go back and redo that. Tonight, I want to mainly talk about, what you have in your packet is about a historical overlay plan, and first of all, I want to talk about what, what led us to this idea originally, and what happened was that we have an Economic Vitality Committee that's chaired by Marion Cole, and she took a group of people, including downtown merchants, building owners, and developers, to mineral wells, to look and see some of the things that they were doing up there, because we had heard some positive things about them. They came back really excited about what they had seen, and, and talked a lot about the person that they had met, who was sort of the lead person in the projects up there, and her name is Cody Jordan, and so they asked Cody to come back, and she did, she came back, and she talked to the Main Street Board, and she talked about all the different kinds of things that are, that they were doing. But one of the things that she shared with us was that one of the mishaps that they had, one of the missteps that she felt that they had had occur, was that they didn't take the time to plan and think about some sort of plan for the downtown to support the historical integrity that was in place there. So she suggested to us that that is something that we really needed to seriously think about, because we were just in the beginning stages of the different kinds of things that we're doing. Now, tonight, I want to talk to you, because we're not mineral wells, we're not Granberry, we're not Haiko or any other city, so whatever we do will be a different kind of approach that fits the needs of our downtown. So I thought about what's important to us downtown, and I came up with some different things that I think are really critical. First of all, we want to support the historic integrity of what we have downtown, if you've been watching Bass Reeves on television, it's pretty exciting to see Stevieville on television. We want our downtown to be the place everyone wants to come to, you know, we want them to say, oh, we want to spend an afternoon, let's go to Stevieville, we want that to happen for our downtown. We want it to be a vibrant downtown with businesses, stores, and all kinds of restaurant venues, and we really want our downtown to be something that is vibrant with activity both during the day and at night. and at night. We had a person who came and did the branding for our community. And those of you who were in attendance remembered that he said, some of these other places are weekend places. But Stevieville is a seven-day-a-week place. And we have the potential to be a seven-day-a-week place that people want to come and visit and shop and be in our downtown. So, how do we support this happening in our downtown? First of all, we need to develop some sort of plan that creates that kind of environment. And our best approach is that it needs to be a partnership. It needs to be a partnership and we need to reach out to our businesses, our property owners in the historic district, so that it becomes a push-forward approach and not a push-back approach. The mayor came and spoke to our group and we really appreciated his, his words because he gave us some real food for thought. I think you're most successful when you can create a vision for people of what you want to happen. You have to have something that they feel like they want to be a part of. For something to be successful and to, to develop this plan for downtown, we'll have to use an approach of offering incentives rather than offering regulations. And I think that that will be an important piece of, of what we choose to do. We're just in the very beginning of this. The mayor, when he talked to us, said it'd be good for Main Street to develop some sort of plan and bring it back to you and, and see how the council feels about it. It will take us time. As you know, this is November and December and everything goes crazy and everybody leaves town and you can't get people together. But early spring, we would like to have a plan to come back to you, one that includes input from all of the people who have businesses downtown and buildings downtown or who are just invested in our downtown. So, that's what I want to come tonight to say to you. I hope that that is something that you feel is the appropriate direction for us to go so that we can start moving forward in making sure we're prepared for the future downtown.
Thank you so much.
Before we adjourn, I just want to say Rita, thanks for coming and thanks for your passion for Stevieville, Texas.
Thank you.
You spend a lot of time in it. Thank you very much. It is 5:58. Our committee will council meeting. And the first item is canvassing the November 7th elections. I've appointed a committee. Matty will be the chair. Lon and Bob, they're going to canvass the results. And so, if they'll go with Sarah, then y'all will get to canvass the results and bring it back. In the meantime, we will stand in recess till they return.